And I gave up page and showed it to. So the money in his department, our department did increase with the law that.
Did you get a copy of that?
I wanted, I was.
No.
I was so heated up that I was like, I'm not something. So tonight is only more that they're supposed to talk about parking these guys. They want to leave to decrease the parking.
Hey Mark, do you guys need a supervisor?
Pardon?
Do you guys need a supervisor?
We do the supervisor.
Do you need a supervisor?
Sure.
Sure.
Well, I make them, I make them, make a motion. In the, in the absence of the supervisor and deputy supervisor, I make a motion to Councilwoman Ross, chair of the meeting.
I'll second that.
All favor.
Okay, well, thank you for coming this evening. Welcome to the special town board meeting of November eighteenth. This is a work session for our budget workshop. If they stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we set tonight as a budget workshop because we still have a lot of work left to do on the budget before we can adopt it at Wednesday night's meeting. So I'll open the floor to anybody on the board.
I asked Cheryl to make a, a list of what from the supervisor's initial tentative budget to what the board made in.
Made for preliminary budget, I don't know if everybody should have got a copy of it.
So, um. Just some of the highlights, there is some, obviously some big increases. But that's what happens when you put out a budget that doesn't cover expenses for the current year. Some of the big, big expenses are increases. We had to increase the retirement fund sixty-six thousand dollars because two hundred thousand dollars wouldn't come close to covering it. We also had to put some money in for communications. In the nineteen budget, there was a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, budgeted, and then that went down to ten thousand. The board put it back up to sixty thousand for the idea, I believe, of redoing the computer system, which is in shambles.
Right.
With the current people who have been here, so we had to put some money into that. Parks and Rec in nineteen, that was budgeted for two hundred thousand. Supervisor's budget dropped it back to fifty thousand, the board put it up to a hundred and fifty thousand, back to one fifty. Then there's just some, well, the payroll in the supervisor's office wouldn't even come close to covering what his salary and the clerk's salary would be. So we put that back. If people remember from one of the meetings, Judge Osman came in and talked about that he felt that some of his people needed a little more money and the board agreed. That was about a forty-five thousand dollar increase. Pardon?
That was the first one.
Yes, the first one. So that's, uh. That does the A fund, which from the supervisor's budget to the preliminary budget is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five seventy-one more. And then in the B fund, there was nothing put in, oh, by the way, in the A fund, there is nothing in there for any sort of. There is a line item left over in the budget from years ago for ambulance, but that has been left at zero. So the board will have to discuss what wants to be done there. In the B fund, there was nothing put in for the comp plan, and I think it was pretty obvious that everybody wants something to be done with the comp plan. So the board raised that, that number in consu- in for consultants from two thousand to a hundred thousand. There was the building department, um, we raised that substantially from the idea that we obviously need more help in the building department for coming projects. Retirement number seemed to be way off by the payroll that was presented. That was a big increase. That was almost, uh, the supervisor's budget had four hundred and fifty thousand in it. And if you take the current payroll for the B fund, uh, and the rates for the employees in the B fund, it would, we put in six eighty-four, five hundred. I don't know if you do the math, maybe it's six eighty-two or six eighty-one, but I mean, it's. Pardon?
Two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
We raised it.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's just, that's just a flat function of payroll. If you're gonna have that kind of payroll in the, in the budget, it's, it's just math. So those are the, those are the big expenses in the B. And in the D, we, we raised it, but some of the, the stuff in the D fund was just trying to get them back to kind of where they were and also to cover lease payments and things that were left out of the supervisor's budget, which are, you know, their contracts. You have to pay them, you have to pay them money. So that's that and a synopsis.
So I guess tonight we have to take a good look of where we are, what appropriations were put in here and how we're gonna move forward to get this budget ready for the whole. I know I saw an email come in from, I believe it's Wesley Hall. Have to go back and take a look at that. Where, um, ten years past, they've always received fifteen thousand dollars. It was not going to this budget, so that's not even in these numbers. I think we have to go out and add this in. This is from the Montgomery Free Library. Um, in the past, they've received a yearly amount of thirty-three oh seventy-five. Due to increasing their spend, expenses, we're asking you to increase this to a yearly total of forty thousand. I mean, at this point, we're so far over. Have to decide whether we can accommodate this.
Well, that expense would actually, I called Jane Hefner today. If you wanted to bring that up to forty thousand, it would only be, because they're already getting thirty-six five, thirty-six thousand, five hundred.
I mean, for last year or for the budget for?
In two, I called Jane today and she pulled out her records and called me back. And they received in two thousand and nineteen, thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
So she might have been a little off on here where she wrote thirty thousand oh seventy-five, maybe that was the year before.
That was eighteen. In eighteen, she actually received thirty-three. I think there was a little confusion there because I explained to her, if she writes us a letter in April, that is gonna, in April of nineteen, that budget is already, that has to be for twenty. Because the budget is already major through year lag. So in eighteen, they actually got thirty-three seventy-five, and in nineteen, they got thirty-six five hundred.
Okay, so they're looking for forty thousand this year.
So, but that number stayed completely flat from last year's budget number, so nobody else would be getting any more increases. If we increased them, they would be the only one out of the libraries getting an increase.
We didn't give Walden an increase?
Not this year. We gave them a huge increase last year. And I think that's why, percentage wise, Montgomery got more than they thought they were gonna get because when we allocated the money, we kept the percentages the same. So that's, uh.
And then, and then the fifteen thousand, so we got a little bit of an increase there, fifteen thousand for Wesley Hall. We have to bring that back to where it was.
What's in the budget now, so it's zero?
Seventy-five. Is there a seventy-five hundred more?
What's the one?
What was it?
Office of Aging.
So it's gotta go from seven thousand to fifty?
Let me double check.
No, it's, it's, it's B seventy-six ten oh four hundred, correct? This is that to quote the line, program for aging.
I know it was seven that, but it's in the seven that.
Yeah, so seventy-six ten four hundred.
Yes.
And.
Well, there's other stuff, there's other stuff.
Right, there's other stuff in there. I think Maybrook and Walden gets some, I think.
Four thousand, one hundred, four thousand and, it's four thousand and something each one gets. Town of Montgomery, town, or Village of Montgomery, Village of Maybrook, and Village of Walden. If you divide that by three.
The twelve fifty-five five.
That is what's already set aside.
So the fifteen is not here at all?
No. That is, that's the exact difference from last year.
Well, she sent us her financials on how they used that money. They'll receive it today in an email.
Yeah, I did.
How they're gonna cover their expenses if we cut that one.
And looking back, eighteen actual was twenty-two six ninety-five. In, or seventeen, right, or seventeen's actual was twenty-two six ninety-five. I don't know what happened in eighteen because they're saying the actual is only seventy-eight hundred. And then the actual to date, according to this document, for nineteen is twenty-seven five five, is twenty-seven five hundred fifty-five. So I, I have no idea what happened in eighteen.
Sheriff, did I cut book to the wrong line?
Yes, I was just looking at the other aging one.
Cause our actuals is exactly what we need to put back in here if we give them that fifteen thousand.
That's exactly what was cut. And they're still due their payment this year. I believe it might be in this.
Well, if they would do their payment yet this year, then they would be, we would be way over budget.
Well, she's saying it's, do you have that included in there?
No, our actuals right now, we're twenty-seven five five five, which is all of it. But I believe that the bill is in here. It would show up on here if we'd already entered.
Isn't this as of, my report stated ten twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, right. But if Frank enters bills as they come in, if he had entered it the day after the last audit, it comes out of, it would show where numbers are being spent. So it automatically would show. It might have been in the last audit, I don't know, but I know they did request it when we entered it. But if Frank has entered it as an expense in this basket, or in the one he has in his office, it automatically shows up as expended on yours.
Would he have, would he, would he have entered it that far in advance? Cause I'm saying this is ten twenty-eight, today's November eighteenth. He would have put it in that far in advance?
He starts right away entering.
So we're not gonna get another bill on top of this twenty-seven?
No, you're not. That is the total.
That fifteen thousand, we put it right at, right at budgeted.
Right, and that would be a zero increase from last year.
Right. But that means we have to increase this by another fifteen thousand.
I, uh, I mean, I think, I think that we should. I mean, how are you gonna?
I think we have to do, I don't see how we could take it out. I mean, their financials are there to back it up, and they've been getting it for years. How would they make that kind of a cut? Anybody else respond?
I agree with that.
So we have to make a motion.
No, during the budget meeting.
Keep adjusting.
Three. And then when he's wrote on it to make it go to adoption, it'll be in there. But if I have three that say to change it, then it'll get changed and then it'll be obtained to look on it in the end.
So in the, in these changes that we did make, do you think there is anywhere that we can cut at all?
Um, well, I guess you can cut as much as you want.
Yeah, but I mean, like, it makes sense, you know?
Um. No, I mean, I, you know, there's, uh. Over this, these two years, the police department has, the budget for payroll has gone up a lot. And I don't know, do you, do you, are you prepared to speak that, about that at all, or it's?
Well, some, like.
You did, did you talk to Butch today?
I did, but.
Overtime increased a little bit.
So when we had, none of, like, the last year that Mike did here, um, which had a lot of overtime in there. And we all agreed to give him another full-time officer to try to cut that overtime down. And now this year, he's proposing it to be more than it was when we gave him the other full-time officer.
Well, I mean, just for.
Still down, you're still down full-time cops.
But the, just for some of the public, if people get an idea, in two thousand and eighteen, budgeted our payroll for the police, and this is just flat-out payroll, no retirement, no social security, no anything. Was one million nine hundred and seventy-four fifty-eight. In two thousand and nineteen, it's two million two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six eighty-two. And budgeted for two thousand and twenty is two million five hundred and twenty-three, six fifty. It's, I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying what the numbers are. It's a, it's a, between a five and almost five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in payroll.
I, I think it was budgeted for a couple more officers, right?
I, I did, in a conversation I had with Butch today, he was told by the supervisor that he could add a full-time police officer in January, and he would still have a four percent decrease in this budget. I don't know where those numbers are, we're not seeing them. I told that to Butch and I said, we do not have a four percent decrease. So he said if we had to not fill that, uh, full-time position in January, that would be a seventy thousand dollar savings, is the number he gave me.
I, I mean, we have to, we have no choice. Uh, we already authorized the new carber, okay? Otherwise, really, we shouldn't be doing that.
Um, the other thing he did say is the security officer at the front door is a huge cost to him. If we come, you know, either rethink that or come up with a different way to staff that, that's, you know, a huge salary. But that's something we have to think about, how we're gonna restaff it, and he's saying that's like fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand, that's it for the year?
That's what he did.
Can you take that off of there?
It was a difference.
More than that. For somebody to be out there. I mean, sometimes it's covered by court officers, but sometimes there's.
Not, not all the officers. Court officers, I mean, court officers can't manage it.
Why is that?
It's all police now, because court officers have no authority, they're court attached, they have, really, they have no authority.
So they can just attend it for, for hours, right, for?
Yeah, so. So that's, that's manned by police officers, police officers.
Can you, can you, how much does an officer make a week? I mean, an hour?
Well, if it's, he, he tries to staff him with part-time officers, it's twenty-eight seventy-one.
Okay, so figure that out, it's almost forty hours, twenty.
Well, it's thirty-five hours, cause down the hall is only thirty-five hours. So it's, you know, it's what, fifty, it's fifty grand in just straight payroll, and then there's social security, blah, 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 retirement up.
Well, not for the part-time.
Part-timers don't get retirement?
No. And they don't get benefits.
But we don't know we staff it with part-timers, which is saying if they're sure.
No, sometimes, on rare occasions, it's, it's staffed by a full-time officer. And it's rare that there aren't overtime, if they are, the rate depends on their grade is gonna be a little bit higher. But I think the twenty-eight seventy-one is a fair average.
I mean, I, I think we oughta think about cutting the hours back to, or get, how far?
Yeah, it, it's about, it kind of, it's about fifty-two to, to staff that from best.
So fifty and seventy is like one, one hundred and something.
Well, I gotta think, I mean, I don't know if you wanna put something there for the death front counter, or take it all out?
Tractual raises.
Yeah, I, I.
Right. I think it was three percent.
It is three percent next year.
I mean, what's the difference from last year to this year? Two hundred?
Almost three hundred thousand.
If we even cut it back a hundred.
And then over the two years, it's been a four hundred thousand increase instead of what's the actual.
Pick up a little bit.
How, how come, how come there has to be three hundred and sixty-something thousand, I think, or three hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars just for overtime?
No, I don't think the overtime.
Two sixty, two five hundred.
Two six, two sixty.
Two sixty, yeah.
Two sixty, two five hundred.
I mean, there's no way that we can cut that down for overtime? With part-timers?
Is it a lot of it for court nights? Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of details, you know, and staffing, or the hearings that you're all having, it all adds up. The, the front door, um, we're down court offices, we're having a lot of time finding court offices, so we're supplementing that. The traffic detail at the high school, it's only a couple hours a day, but it all, it all adds up, especially if most, most of these details appear all the time.
Who thoughts?
Nobody would have a quick breakdown of the difference in the payroll from part-timers to, uh, full-time, full-time, would they?
I have hours rich.
No, I'm talking about the breakout of how many, how much of that payroll is made up of part-timers? Because when we did, we, we did the retirement, we took the total payroll number and multiplied it by the retirement rate of twenty-four percent. If whatever chunk of that, I was under the impression that part-timers were, got retirement, so obviously that was wrong.
Well, here's, let me, let me just expand on that. So, a part-timer, uh, like, like myself. Pure, just pure pay. I already have a police retirement, so I don't need benefits, I don't need, but if, um, a part, so, there's no contribution.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, there's no contribution there. Now, a part-timer like, uh, like Dave Gallin, this is like, he will, it's gonna take him a very long time, but eventually he will get a, a retirement.
But that's my question, and I don't, so, if Dave Gallin makes a hundred bucks, is the town paying the New York State Retirement twenty-four bucks? That's the question.
If you have some.
If you have some part-timers that are getting.
Because that makes, that would make a big difference in our, um, number from four fifty to six eighty-four on the retirement, because I just took, took straight payroll. I didn't realize that there was that big of a breakout, so whatever that breakout is of people who are not getting that twenty-four percent. I mean, twenty-four percent's a heavy, I mean, I'm.
I may need to get a chunk.
And when you look in the past, cause I went back to other budgets, it makes sense that that is a, a decent chunk of the payroll. Cause if you looked at your actuals in the past, the retirement was down, you know what I mean? The numbers, you know, it didn't.
Well, s- some of the full-time offices may give you significant overtime, covering the time that, for the cops, the full-time is hard.
Right now, I'm not talking about overtime, I'm talking about gross payroll. And who does the town have to pay the twenty-four percent on? What, what portion of that two million dollar payroll is done by part-time people that the town doesn't have to pay the twenty-four percent on? I don't, I don't know if there's any.
It's, it's, that's minimal.
That's minimal, so we're, so we're close in our six, at our number then, by taking payroll and multiplying it by twenty-four percent. Yeah, I mean, if it's minimal, it's not worth.
Yeah, but a monthly report will show everything.
I think there's nineteen part-timers.
But how many of them are, um?
Now, I don't even, I'm not sure, I, Cheryl can answer it. I'm not sure what the town has to pay towards retirement.
It's about twenty-four percen- it's about twenty-four cents on the dollar.
If you're in the retirement pool.
Because police and firemen are extremely expensive because it's twenty years in and, and out, so.
It's gonna be a minimum, maybe.
Part-timers can be in the retirement system.
Some part-timers.
Some part-timers are, once they're already retired. You have to pay that twenty-four.
The part-timers that are not already retired are in it.
Right.
Right.
But they can be, and if they opt into it, then you have to pay into it.
Yes, that's true.
But we could have hired part-timers that have already retired from another.
Well, she's gonna get a list of.
You probably have, well, she'll come in with the numbers. It only may be half a dozen, so the part-timers that were actually getting the times. Most everybody, most, or, or part-time cops are retired.
I think once you're retired, that would be, you can't keep.
No, well, I get, I get, I get. You know, pay the retirement system for the benefits, I don't need, I don't need benefits.
So out of nineteen, if half of them are.
But then we have to know what that contribution of those particular people are to that payroll number.
So we can see if we could lower this.
I just think DCJF reported today on personnel, this is a, but I think the number of part-timers was, was around nineteen to twenty-three percent. Yeah, I can guess it made a, maybe, maybe six that aren't retired cops.
Did we get the retirement bill yet?
I was told that's paid at the end of the year. We're close.
It's paid December fifteenth, so when would you get it?
You got it when?
And we should have it.
Well, that will tell us too, that'll be big information on our actuals for nineteen. You need that number.
Oh, why she, we wanna wait while she's just one more second. Oh, why she, we wanna wait while she's just one more second. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven of your part-time police officers still belong to the retirement.
So seven, yeah, I, I, I did think of, I go project seven.
But we have no way of knowing what their, what the contribution of labor of the ones that aren't into the total number. I'd be, that would be monumental.
And I don't know about the new.
Do you?
The three new part-time officers, if, I believe a couple of them are still working, aren't they, so they would be in, they would want their credits.
Um, one, two, two of them are, are, one is a full-time officer in City Newberg, and that shows Nicole's full-time.
Yeah, but even if she's not, she's most likely gonna put her, whatever time she works into the retirement.
Cheryl, I hate to make you run back and forth, but did we, we got to go for the New York State Retirement for everything?
Um, we don't, we get it in December. No, I'm having Newberg got it three weeks ago. About what three weeks ago? It's due in December, during town. But no.
Oh, twenty four percent on police, and about in fifteen to sixteen of our employees.
Fifteen is what I figured out.
So I'm sorry, I, the answer is we don't have it?
She don't have it.
So, wait, is it this simple, a part-time officer only makes, they're limited to what they can make, I mean, they're limited, no, they're limited on their hours.
Right, a thousand, ten hours.
So, a part-time officer makes about thirty, thirty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, no, that's.
Thousand, forty?
So if, if you max it out, say every, all of those seven part-timers make thirty thousand, which they don't, some, we have some part-timers that don't even come close to that.
Well, that's where it gets, if you might, but that's a good idea.
If you max it out at thirty thousand, twenty four percent, that'll give you at least your high number.
And takes, so, well, you, basically, I'm trying to subtract.
Right.
Trying to figure out what part of that payroll can we take away from the twenty four percent number in the retirement line? So if there's seven people considering.
Be like seven, you probably could do about seventy-two thousand, that would be, that would be.
It's seventy-two hundred per cop, if, if I'm three minutes late.
And so there's seven cops that don't.
Right, and if we do ten out of the twenty-two that we have, we know at least ten of them are guaranteed not in the retirement. We have twenty-two.
Well, what I'm getting at then is if you, if we decide to cut the payroll somewhat, and then with what we just did, we can probably cut that retirement. We can cut that retirement number in the B fund a little bit too. That, um, six eighty-four could probably.
Six seventy-two off it then?
Um, because it was a little high anyway, even on the payroll. Cause I came up with a total payroll in the B fund of two sev- two million, seven hundred sixty-five thousand, four fifty-one. Which, most of that is police, but you have your, you have your building inspector, you have all your planning board, um, your planning board clerk. And your building inspector's secretary, so, and that would be at the lower rate. So that couple hundred thousand out of the two, two seven would be at of like fifteen or sixteen percent. And so if you, the six eighty-four is taking the whole payroll at the high percent, so there's probably some room there, you could probably cut that down to. You could probably take seventy, eighty thousand off of that, still be okay.
Seventy-two off and that down to six twelve-five, but you could even go.
Well, I mean, it's one of those things, it would be nice to see what we actually paid last year, or paying in this year, because then that would give us a lot more information on what. Where we stand, because it's a big number through all the funds, I mean, the retirement is a big, it's a big, big number.
The way, I mean, I can pull this voucher number entirely, take the time to vouchers and see how it was split out for December, when it was paid last December. Yeah, well, like this year is not.
No, we're, we're worried about what we budgeted, because we budgeted in nineteen, we have a budgeted number, and it would be really nice to see what the actual is. Because then that budgeted number would no longer be a mystery, that would be an actual that will be in.
Right. Can we call and find out what that figure is, if Ron's already gotten his bill, like, that we make a call?
It's online, just sign into the retirement system, print it out.
I didn't see it. The, okay, because I've also been checking on the health insurance and waiting for that. Um, I went into the retirement, it didn't give me unless I'm not accessed to that part of it. I don't have access to the whole thing, I can report. So, if I can only report, does somebody else, does anybody get that? Okay, then that's why I don't have, because I'm only allowed to do the report.
Yes, that's a good, that's a good way to look at it.
So we can access that.
That's your worst case scenario, because that's about all they can make, based on the ten forty.
Cause then we could.
Right, right.
I think that's, oh, that's a very good, good way to put it together.
Okay.
So if we can get her online tomorrow, so she can get that figured for us. I can, I can try and call and see if they'll give it to, make no guarantee, and beg and plead, and we'll see to help. And approval to get that changed, so, you wanna hold that figure for tonight, you wanna lower it to the?
Well, I mean, we're starting to run out of time here, so.
We can lower it, I don't know, six ten?
So, we'll, 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 though that.
I mean, it, it's a budget, you're trying to make a, a good, honest projection. So, I mean, I, you know, I think if you dropped it seventy thousand or so, that would be, you're not gonna get hurt one way or the other, but that. You know, it's not gonna be a magnitude of change, but it will help, you know.
If we drop it seventy, it'll put us at, um.
Six, uh, twelve, fourteen, five.
Six, six, fourteen, five, yeah. And what about, um, since I, what about the salaries are, are doing anything with that line?
I think we have to at least drop that, um.
The overtime line?
Full timer.
The full timer for January, okay, that's seven.
And we have to cut back the hours on the full day, to maybe just leave the same.
And the overtime.
Well, it doesn't really matter where, what, whether it comes out of overtime or whatever, it's all payroll.
Right.
So it'll work.
So we're in a, we're in.
So if he's talking seventy for the full timer, is that what you said?
You put in January for a full-time payroll, full-time officer payroll seventy thousand for January.
I mean, I think we gotta cut that back to almost a hundred thousand. A gray or not?
I mean, we can cut a little bit of, at the front door, if we get.
The front door's gonna be cut in.
Maybe a private.
Front door's gonna save, save fifty-two thousand.
Right.
And you'll, you'll experience a savings, that's, that, that seventy-two hundred, that's a high number. Again, some, some of those part-timers that we're talking about, they're not even coming close to that, to their thirty thousand. So, you, you'll, you'll experience a, a decrease there too.
Like, we're also, won't that open up the part-timers then to be on the road when you need them instead of an officer, because you're filling downstairs with a part-timer?
Right, that's it, you're gonna get more, that's gonna, that's gonna.
Right, that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna, that way back into the, into the road patrol.
It's gonna be a little bit of a stumble.
Right, or we'll, we'll put the body back in.
It'll put you.
So I think with seventy for the full timer, and thirty for out of the front door, we gotta leave some in there. I think we could go back a hundred thousand.
I mean, talking to the chief, he felt with other security pieces that we put into town hall, cameras, I don't wanna.
Cameras are pretty.
Say all the security features that are in, but there's other security features in town hall, he felt.
I mean, you still have to have somebody there for courts, and maybe some meetings, yeah.
Yes. Well, the chief figured in the court officers for court.
Yeah, but you have to have somebody on the front door, doing court.
Yep, that's, he has that.
But no court officer.
Well, you still, you still Bobby Jewett Fabrizio as police officers.
Right, but they gotta be on the front door.
Yeah, they weren't the two. But I think she's saying they're, they're, he's got them figured in, in another line item, is what you're saying. Yes.
So I would say that we should cut that back a hundred thousand. And hopefully he can work on that overtime a little bit.
Um, it's been, it's been just, uh, I've been working on the schedule, but, yeah, and, uh, we've made some progress on that.
Alright, so, I'm trying to keep track here, so, seven, we're gonna drop the retirement by seventy, and we're gonna drop the overall police payroll by hundred.
Right.
That everybody.
And we're gonna add in the fifteen.
Add the fifteen.
Right, gotta add the fifteen, and I don't know what you wanna do about the library.
I was gonna say, that's the library.
And if nobody else got.
Thirty-five hundred.
If nobody else got, it's not fair to give it just to Montgomery.
Right.
Well, they gave them both last year.
Right, but they, Montgomery, I think, got a bigger shot last year than they thought they were gonna get, because they were piggybacking on Walden's big increase. And this year, it stayed completely flat.
I think this year we're gonna have to just leave it.
So if you wanna just leave it flat, just leave it that way, and.
Maybe next year.
Cause they got big increases, I mean, that code went up eighty or ninety thousand dollars last year.
Okay, um, we gotta talk about the ambulance. I know we.
Did you guys get any credentials from them?
Absolutely nothing. I, and I, when I called them, I was stressed before, we gotta get as quickly as possible, but.
I mean, here it is, he came to us only a month ago, and he's still not giving us anything.
Well, I, I. I, I think that there's another issue, whether the town gives the Walden Ambulance Corps money, or does something else for ambulance service. There is zero money allocated in the budget for anything. So no matter what, obviously I might not be here, but I, whatever the future board decides to do, if we don't fund, fund it at all, it's gonna be kinda hard to do anything. So, that is kinda, I think, the quandary, I wouldn't want people to think that if we put X amount of dollars in there, that's automatically going to.
To them.
To, to them, but I think everybody's in agreement, something has to be done with ambulance service for the town.
I mean, yeah, if we continue to move forward working with them, and try to get them where they need to be, we gotta have some money there to be able to do that, so.
And I mean, we.
There goes our, at least towards the therapy.
No, because it's a different, it's a different fund.
But it's still coming from the same pop.
Well, right, exactly.
Yes. Yeah, the, which Cindy kinda talked to, which about today.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Well, it's funny, it was boring.
I mean, we already approved the car. We already approved the car, which we're getting the one new car for the accident, and you're gonna get another new car, really, you shouldn't have even given them the other new car.
Yeah.
But you got it already, so, you got it.
Yeah.
Safety money on the IT.
Yeah.
That is.
Yes, you did.
Which reminds me, uh, Cheryl, was that purchase order signed by the supervisor yet?
Yes.
For the IT?
No.
Can we have that, please? That IT is detrimental, that it gets done ASAP, and it's been way over a month, and he hasn't signed it. Thank you. This is just the one purchase order?
Yes, it's for the new server that has to be.
I mean, did each one, but he signed it just to tell?
Yes, everything is supposed to be signed.
What, yeah, what's, what code is it?
Forty-five, forty on the A.
Forty-five, forty.
Two places?
You're getting handy with it, Cheryl.
These are red things on.
Sign under my name.
Really, should I read it first or just?
No, just.
You already agreed it.
One more. Two pages, give that to Sandy.
So in the A fund, there is a, there is a code for ambulance, and it's just ambulance service, and it's been empty since seventeen eighteen, I believe, whenever the town stopped. To deal with the Walden Ambulance Corps. Yeah, see, they funded it, it's forty, forty-five, forty dash oh four.
Two, thirty-eight, if any did.
Yes.
Any, any suggestions?
I mean, they came in and said they needed, off the top of their head, three hundred thousand, they had no documentation from what that's for.
You know, we can't just, yeah, we can't just, they've had.
The difference between their.
At least two months to give us documentation, at least, I mean, they know we're working on the budget.
But there again, it's not, we shouldn't get zero in on just them, it's the overall service that has to get reckoned with.
Right.
Right.
What do we have to do?
So. And the expense report that he gave us, the cash revenues versus the cash expenses, was, I believe, about a fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollar shortfall. So then, you know, for the prior year.
Do, we must have a different budget here, like, what we get for that bank?
Yes, sir.
The rent?
So.
Yeah, what is it, three hundred a month or six hundred a month?
Six hundred a month, right there, do you know where it would be?
Would be just on the revenue side, so.
I think the rent's six.
Rents, yeah, rents.
I think it is.
I think it's six hundred.
No, it probably wouldn't be line item, just ambulance, you know, it would be rent.
No.
It's gonna be in revenue.
Know where that is, Cheryl?
Revenue?
Yeah, for the, the rent we get for the ambulance bank, from when they, um, wanted to start billing, and they walked away from us.
And, I mean, I don't know if that makes a difference, because we're not gonna change, we're not gonna change that, we're looking at the fence side, not the revenues, and we're not gonna change the rent from them, so it's not gonna change the revenue side anymore.
Well, I mean, wouldn't that help them, that they don't have to pay that six hundred bucks a month? As part of it?
Can we give away a town building, it's a private entity, right?
Charge him a dollar.
All right.
Charge him a dollar.
I mean, I'm just saying that, that would help rather than, I, I don't know.
But there again, we're gearing, we're gearing toward that organization, and I'm not, I'm just saying that there's, things are so wide open, there might be different avenues that might have to get taken.
I mean, we, we need some money, I, I mean, they have to help them for.
Yeah, I think there's gotta be some, I think there's gotta be some money to give the future board some opportunity to do something, whatever it is.
Brian? You mind if I say something?
Not at all.
Alright, cool, so two things I think would be great to focus on, the first thing is, there's gotta be a number, right? You guys haven't made a motion to override the tax cap, which would need to be done by a certain date, so there's only a certain amount of physical dollars you can spend. One, so where are you with all the additions as opposed to what that number is, because that's gonna be your ceiling, correct? Okay, the second thing is, to Mark's point, there's a ton of different things that are just totally unknown, in terms of how we can improve inventory services in the town, right? That are not specific to the town, but there's a lot of different options, so there's a lot of conversations that are going to take place in the coming weeks and the coming months. So there's a lot of conversations that are going to take place in the coming weeks and the coming months, um, where maybe a dollar amount would help, but maybe it wouldn't. So it's really nearly impossible to determine what that amount is, and the only thing that I think was brought to this board's attention was a number of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a percentage of which you might be able to return, should the ambulance corps get some of those expenses paid. So I think that's the only real dollar information you have to go by, so that'll be up to you guys, but I think it might help the conversation to know where you are with all the additions you've made to the, to the budget. How much is left for you to even contribute to that line, and I don't know that, I'm just asking that question.
Well, yeah, I mean, the tax cap is three hundred and sixty four thousand, we're allowed to do and be within the cap.
So what are you?
Not sixty four twenty four.
So add that three sixty four, what are you at now with all the additions, how much is left to add?
I'm not following your question.
And he's saying for what we're changing the budget to now, do we need to use all that?
Well, there was no, in the preliminary and in the tentative budget, so far the board has gotten along with the supervisor of zero tax increases.
But we can't do that.
So, no, that, obviously we can't do that because we'll be broke by twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty one.
So you have to take this three twenty four and allocate it throughout, you can allocate it in any fund you want to, however, cause it's on the total tax levy of the whole town. That's where that number comes from.
My question is, with all the things you added currently, where are you to that three hundred and twenty four thousand number?
Way over.
Way over.
Way, well, we, we haven't raised taxes in two, in last year, we didn't raise them at all, and all we're doing is funding these, this budget with fund balance.
We took late.
Fund balance.
So basically, I'm just, just so I can be clear, what you're doing is totaling all the things you may want to increase it, and then you might have to play around with fund balance, not just the contribution of what it would be for tax, raising the taxes.
Some form of balance.
Okay, just making sure.
There's, there's no way that we can even raise the taxes enough to cover.
Well, you can't too, you can't legally, oh, to a certain point.
No. Right.
And that's the three, that's the three twenty four.
Without going over.
That keeps us under cap.
I mean, we can, if we were to override that.
I mean.
No, it's too late.
This preliminary had like one point one million out of.
Pardon? There again, that's democracy in action, one person. Well, I, what, just my cut, my uh suggestion would have been, if you're talking about that tax cap, is to take, add a hundred thousand to the, to the amount to be raised by taxes, a hundred thousand in A, a hundred thousand in B, and take the remaining hundred and twenty four thousand and add it to highway, because highway has been cut back the most, and its fund balance is depleted the most. And it's probably the most volatile agency that we have, because it's so weather, so weather determined. So, and if we did that, if the budget before, actually, it'll be more pleasant than these numbers, because actually, today, we just cut more than we added. So before we figure these numbers out, if you did that scenario, the rate would go up, in the A fund, the rate would go up seven cents a thousand, in the B fund, it would go up eleven cents a thousand, and in the highway fund, it would go up fourteen cents a thousand. So if you lived in the village, your taxes would go up, and you had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home, which would be roughly a market value home of four hundred thousand, your taxes would go up seventeen dollars and fifty cents. And the, if you lived outside the town, your total taxes on that two hundred and fifty thousand assessed home would go up eighty bucks. And it'll be a little bit.
You mean outside the village, outside the town.
Oh, outside, outside the village. So. So that, it, that will get a little bit better with the hundred and, well, you got a hundred and seventy minus fifteen is about one fifty five. So you have a one fifty five drop in the B fund, so that would.
I got one forty two. Because you increased twenty seven by fifty five.
Well, twelve five was already in there, so we only had to work fifteen on that.
I mean, we're still gonna pull a significant amount out of fund balance.
Yeah.
We've been doing this, we're still pulling a lot of money out of fund balance.
That's why knowing those retirement numbers would be a big deal, cause that's a big nut, and then that would lead you to believe on how well you're gonna be doing in the nineteen budget, which reflects on that. Are we on the same page or not, Cheryl?
Mm-hmm. What'd you say?
No, we, we sub, we subtracted one seventy and we added fifteen, correct?
Okay, let me just, I have fifteen thousand that we already added.
To the scene.
To the scene and one seventy that we wrote.
Right.
Okay.
So that's a net difference of one fifty five.
Yes.
So that would probably drop, because in the B fund, I think it's what, fourteen cents every hundred thousand.
And then we're gonna do one hundred A, one hundred B, one twenty four D?
Yes, and that would leave, cause the numbers you gave me was three twenty four, nine forty four.
Do you wanna do just the hundred and twenty four thousand straight?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, we're decision.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking for everybody's, so have the.
So what are we gonna do with the ambulance one?
I would say I put a hundred and twenty in there right now.
I was thinking a hundred, but it's close.
Well, that's better than not having anything in there like it is now.
You guys think?
It'd be a starting point, I guess.
And like he said, that doesn't mean that they're gonna just get that, but you know, we need to have a line item.
And I'm not sure if the board is, I mean, you all looked at the agreement, but it's proposed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the contract will be from billing revenue, so they are anticipating.
Being from what?
Billing revenue.
Billing, they're gonna get billing.
So they're anticipating nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars if their needs are listed, three hundred thousand dollars should be coming from the town, um, and that's only, you know, the town liability would be four, and then six fifty is on billing revenue.
Right, but there's, I think, we're, here again, we're getting focused on that organization.
Right, 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 yes.
Well, if you put a hundred in, then the uh, you would use up the same, because by putting that three twenty four in, you're basically lowering your fund balance allocation, which will leave more for future, future boards, so if you put the hundred in, you're still gonna be at that same fund balance of eighty fifty seven. And raise the taxes by seven cents.
May I say something? What if for now, you don't budget until you get the full contract and you find out what services are going to be supplied by who? Because you can have other services that might be cheaper for the town, I know it's, it's an emergency point right now, but.
Yeah, you have to have something in there, I mean, they're asking for three, and we're looking at a hundred.
When you put a hundred in, it doesn't mean that you're gonna spend it either.
On that either.
Right, but like Mark is saying, why not leave it with the fund balance until you see and then you.
No, I didn't say that, I said, I said that the appropriated, that the appropriated fund balance in this budget will not change then, if we add a hundred in,
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what you're saying. We're gonna give it to them.
And we're gonna put in a, a hundred into taxes, that appropriated fund balance will stay the same at the eighty fifty seven.
Sorry. It must be a wash, yes.
So, do we wanna just do a hundred or twenty?
I think a hundred would be good enough out of the box.
Keep that a wash, whatever it be fun.
Because we, we have, we're just complete total unmountment.
Not gonna change our fund balance up a lot. Does that change at all in the A fund, change a little bit in the B fund?
Yes.
And it's a big, big proportion for what the highway has left.
Yeah, we'll help them a lot.
Yeah, it'll help them. So once it's mandated, it's not.
And you're also helping, you're also helping future boards, I tried to say that last year, that we should have raised the tax levy up to the, to the cap last year, because now, then you, you're losing every year, you don't do it a little bit, you're losing the ability to raise.
And so much of this budget is mandated, it's not like lower it, it's just, it's mandated figures that we have to produce.
So what's, go with that and?
A hundred?
A hundred.
I'd be in favor of that.
So if she punches in all those changes, we're.
Cheryl, you could get that bill tomorrow, I mean, that late, I'll make the changes, we're way high. Alright, I will do my best to get that tomorrow, and I can email it.
We don't have the retirement figure or the uh health insurance figure?
The health insurance isn't out yet, and um Ron said he hasn't received his yet either, right, I'm not missing that?
Did he gave out the uh worst case scenario?
Right.
And I always go by the middle.
Right, I did ten percent.
It's ten point two percent.
Yeah, I did ten percent is what I did on the budget, the middle, so, you know, that's all, but we don't have a firm rate yet.
The retirement was a solid number.
Right, I'm gonna have to see how to get that. Cause I didn't even get an email saying they were, you know.
A hundred or.
The bill was out, so it must have led to the supervisor. You know?
Alright. Cheryl has um a concern that she has vouchers that have to be entered tomorrow for, ordered on Wednesday, and she doesn't know if she's gonna get them signed. Do you, does the rest of the board feel we should sign them, well Frank says we can sign them.
So this would be all the vouchers?
No, there's a couple left.
Is this for the pre audit or?
No, this is for Wednesday night's audit, these are all open in the month.
Oh, quick, if you see the yellows, the yellow is highway, they just, you, you look at them now, or you look at them with the.
Right, well, I mean, I'm, so, I was gonna say anyway, I wanted to go through all the vouchers.
Oh, okay.
So are they, are they in?
This is, no, we have two separate baskets, because these are the ones that aren't signed for it to be entered, and then Frank has the basket on his desk.
Well, I'm gonna stay.
Well, I'd like to just do.
Alright, so.
But she said three people have to sign.
We need, yeah, we have three signatures. Or they wait until the um pre audit.
And we'll get like charges and all that.
Yes.
So it's all of, what's in there?
Yes, what's in here, like I said, the highway, they're already signed, so they're already authorized, I guess they've always been asked to give it. Oh, you got that one signed, thank you.
So where do you want us to sign these?
To sign them.
In there, yeah, we'll work that one.
Let it go over at a bigger table.
Okay. So let's, let's adjourn meeting. Oh, yes, yes, we do.
Before that, can I just, just a couple, a couple of. Personnel letter for the council?
We, we um. We can't leave our stuff here, can we adjourn from that, if we have to?
That it connects back in here.
Cause there's another meeting, we're not making any decisions.
Yeah, but you, you still have to be part of it.
We gotta come back out here and adjourn.
So we only have about ten minutes?
Yeah, we have. Yeah.
That, or do we have enough chairs to move it into the other room?
I, I'm, I'm the ZBA attorney, so I have to be there for some of the talking.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so pardon.
So we're thinking of, are we going into?
Is this something that is gonna go out into the future possibly? This, this talk, uh, cause I'm not saying we got two, uh, two future board members here, I would say that invite them in if it's um something that's.
If the majority of the board wants to invite them in, I'd.
I mean, I would make that.
Is it something that's gonna be addressed next year, or is it something that's been pending right now?
No, it's something that's happening right now.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not going to.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
Correct.
Okay, so then I guess we don't need to do that.
Make a motion to go in and session, session. Somebody second.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry.
I say.
Alright.
Alright.
What is it, folks?
Uh, personnel confirmed, counsel.